Ma'am, sir. Open up for me. Form? It is six o'clock. At this time I will call to regular meeting of the Perry City Council Tuesday, March 7th, 2017, quarter please. We have a form. Item three is the indication of the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Do you would please rise? At this time I'd like to call Reverend Willie King, Councilman, and also Reverend, the senior pastor for the Faith Bible Fellowship for the Impeccable.
And thank you. Part of you thanks for so much putting it together. I want to thank you for the city and the council and the nurse patient. I pray that you will move forward with the city, which continue to give us forgiveness, that we will do the right thing for all the people in the city, to thank you and Jesus and your prayer. Amen.
I'd like to call Councilman Riley Hunt to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen. Item four, our community partner updates. Is there any community partner present who wishes to give a city an update at this time? Thank you. Item five, our citizens with input. Is there any citizen present who wishes to address council on any matter at this time? Yes ma'am? Please move forward and state your name and address.
Okay, right here.
Yes ma'am.
My name is Heather Ray and I actually live at 107 Hampton Way, which is in Lakeland, which is outside of the city. But, you know, I'm a Perry girl, so.
Thank you.
I'm here to represent a group of concerned parents. I know that, I've talked to Kevin about some of these things. Hi Kevin. And, and so, I understand that there are some directions that we're going to be excited about, but the group of parents that I'm representing, representing, wanted to make sure that the full council heard our concerns. We're really excited about Perry's Park, we know it's gonna be great, but we are a bit concerned that we have thirteen parks in the county, or in the city, some of which are maybe not up to where we would like for them to be, and we're spending money on a new park. We, for the parents of young children, and I have older children, these are my kids, for the parents of younger children, there are some concerns that the playground equipment isn't engaging, it's not up to date, some of it is kind of falling apart in some of the parks. There are some concerns about, about there being activities for the entire family to enjoy. I hear a lot about the Byron Park and about how, you know, there's a place for parents to walk around while their kids play, there's a big huge playground, and I think that that's really kind of the direction that some of our folks want us to go in. And lastly, we're a little bit concerned about some of the, the trash that are in some, that is in some of our parks. To that end, we are putting together some volunteer groups, and I know that I'm gonna be talking with Kevin about this more. And, and so we want to know as citizens what we can do to be a little bit more vocal about our concerns, but at the same time, you know, recognize that we are rich in parks. I mean thirteen parks for a tiny little community like Perry is amazing, and so we just wanna make sure that they're as engaging and recognized as they can be.
Thank you Ms. Ray. I appreciate your comments. To that end, I'm sure you are aware that the city has created a public, a Perry Public Facilities Authority, in which they're meeting tonight, in order to finalize a bond sale. The proceeds of that bond sale are about two point five.
Can you mark that take note?
No.
Okay, thanks.
And if you miss something, Mr. Gilmore can correct me when I say something wrong.
Okay.
He's the city manager that's sitting at the end over here.
Hi.
The majority of how all of the proceeds of that bond sale is going to make a significant improvement to five of the parks, of the thirteen that you had mentioned. Some of them are significant, like Perry's Park and Creekwood Park.
Okay.
However, there are some other improvements that we intend on using some of those funds for as well.
Okay.
And we had a walk with Mayor and Council Tuesday night of last week, and walked through, what neighborhood was that?
New Hope.
New Hope. And there is, one of the parks is over there, and one of the citizens there commented the same thing, that there is some equipment in it that is primarily for smaller children, and was looking for us to upgrade with, with, excuse me, equipment for seven, twelve-year-olds or something like that.
Right.
So, we're getting that, that message from that standpoint, and Mr. Gilmore is taking notes, and he will work with Mr. Di on making an assessment of our parks, and make sure that the funds that we have available are spent appropriately, and your input is welcome from that standpoint. If you, any comments like that, please continue to work with Mr. Di and or Mr. Gilmore, so that we have the input that we can use, and this is the appropriate time, because we're going to have some funding available in which to make that type of purchase.
Okay.
In the very near future.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I add something to that?
Certainly.
I think I engaged with you a little bit on.
Yes.
On Facebook, and if there are some links, the mayor mentioned you all, there are some specific items that you all would like to see, you know, 'cause I don't have children, I haven't had any today as a teacher, but, but if you have some specific ideas about equipment you would like to see, I'm sure that would be helpful to us and to Mr. Di in terms of making those decisions about what to specifically look at getting.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that, and thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Thank you Ms. Ray.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council on any subject at this time? Thank you. Item six is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section 36-67A-3C. This public hearing will have several different items, and will take them one at a time, but it is still a public hearing. Item six A is a petition for rezoning application number R-17-01. The applicant Desmond S. Ritchie requests for the deannexation of property from the city of Perry along with a zoning classification request from the city of Perry R-2A, Two-Family Residential District, the city of Perry R-AG Residential Agricultural. The property is located at 2000 and 2008 House and Lake Road. Mr. Wood.
Mayor, members of council, this application, as you mentioned, is to, there are two actions, or two requests. The first is to deannex the property from the city of Perry, and in the event that doesn't, don't do that, then the applicant is requesting that property be rezoned from R-2A to R-AG. The property is, there are two parcels that are involved in the request, which you see, which you see highlighted here. They have footage on Perry, on House and Lake Road, and total, I believe, is approximately forty, forty-five acres. The request is to deannex, the app, the planning commission recommended denial of that. The deannexation request is based on not being able to provide services at this point, and I've provided you with a memo on the cost of providing water service. The planning commission recommended denial of the deannexation with regard to the rezoning application. Again, the property is currently zoned R-2A, which is the same zoning as an adjacent tract. These are the two parcels, or three parcels, as we said, that are in the city limits, and as you see at the bottom, there's a subdivision that is also in the city limits. The surrounding properties here are in the county. So the request for the RAG is appropriate, is on the classification, the planning commission has recommended approval of that RAG classification.
Thank you Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Wood, concerning the use of the deannexation for the request to change the zoning from R-2, uh, R-2A to RAG? Hearing none? Hold on.
Okay.
At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning application number R-17-01, request for the deannexation of property and the zoning and classification change as described? Yes, sir. Please stand and state your name and address.
I'm Desmond Ritchie, I'm the guy that did the request.
Yes, sir.
It's my wife Cindy. We live at 208 William D. Evans Court in Catherine, Georgia. We purchased the land in 2014. It was originally zoned R-2 because there was gonna be a subdivision there, and the adjoining property. I guess the guy was bankrupt and he got lucky. We purchased it, he purchased it 2006, and then went for the rezoning, made R-2. I think they were gonna have like three or four houses per acre. It was really gonna be a cluster of houses. So, our, our goal is to put a house out there, and a barn, and to put the barn out there, we'd like to do activities, like weddings and different things in the barn. The R-2 classification won't support that, so that's the request to go to agriculture, because you can have a barn, and I think they're actually calling it like a country club barn. So that's, that's kind of what the whole request is. As far as the deannexation, when we originally started doing this, we came and we requested sewage, and we requested water, and we thought we were gonna get things going, and then we found out that the sewage has never been run to that kind of area. It stops at the fire department, it's down off Arena Road, I think it's Arena Road, Porch Street, oh, anyway, down a little farther, down House and Lake Road, and the city's not planning on running that for several years, they said. And then we asked for the water, and it was gonna be a problem because it's a state road, House and Lake Road, and to get water from the other side to our side has been required state permits or borough under the road, some other stuff. So we requested deannexation because our theory was, if we can't get any services, then why the heck are we paying three thousand dollars a year for taxes? That was our theory, that, that's the request, and then the request for rezoning is based on the barn, so we could host events, wedding events, and things like that up for. Any questions?
Thank you Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you.
Is anyone else present who wishes to speak for this petition as described? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this petition for rezoning application R-1701, for deannexation and the reclassifications zoning change as described? Thank you. Item six B, we're still in a public hearing, is a petition for a special exception application number SE-1701. The applicant Desmond S. Ritchie requests a special exception to allow for an event venue similar to a privately owned and operated country club. The property is located at 2008 House and Lake Road. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. The request is for a special exception. The property, you can see here in aerial shot, which will give you a better understanding, the two parcels, the app, the special exception would be for the parcel in yellow, outlined in yellow. The applicant is proposing to build the venue in this area, and access will be from Council and Lake Road. The applicant, as you heard, was proposing to build a facility that would be used for what we call event venues. That particular use is not specifically listed in the Perry Land Development Ordinance, but the term privately operated country clubs is, and we felt that the uses proposed here are similar to the types of uses that would be allowed and conducted in a privately operated country club, for the types of uses that Mr. Ritchie previously mentioned. Didn't want to point out that, just to be clear and for the record, that the location of the facility here will require that a paved fire access road be connected to this for by fire access, and that paved parking will be, will need to be provided for this facility, and we will work with the applicant, let's say, to take care of the permitting process.
Thank you Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Wood, concerning this petition for special exception as described? Thank you. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this petition for special exception number SE-1701 as described?
Do you want me to speak again?
Mr. Ritchie, you can say that you're for it in this particular portion, and that would be sufficient, you'd be glad, are you glad to listen to it again if you'd like?
No, well, yeah, we're for it, that's the first thing we've heard about a road though, so. I, I would like to say that the guys upstairs have been doing a great job trying to help us work our way through this, it's our first, you know, picture into this kind of thing, and, and sometimes I think it's their first trying to figure out how to, how to work us through the wickets, so we appreciate all their help. But, but yeah, we didn't hear anything about roads, so that's a, another challenge.
Well, there's got to be fire protection for your facility.
Our fire department doesn't like to ride those heavy trucks down our dirt road, that usually doesn't mix because they're fairly heavy, and that's the purpose of the foreland. If, if something catches on fire, you want to make sure they can get there. And I don't want to have one of my trucks stop.
Right.
Sir, how far is it off the road? Quarter mile, half a mile?
Um, it's probably about fifteen hundred yards, fifteen hundred feet, fifteen hundred feet, some of that. So, you can see right there, there's, there's, we're, we're just, we're probably fifty feet off House and Lake Road, and that's about a thousand feet to the, to that barn, and then on the other side of those trees over there on the right is where the other barn's gonna go. So, it's probably another seven hundred, so maybe, maybe eighteen hundred feet.
Thank you. For the record, it was likely Mr. Ritchie's speaking for.
Thank you.
I don't want to cut you off, Mr. Ritchie.
We're good, no sir, yeah.
I want to make sure, we're still in a public hearing, so I want to make sure we get in all the comments. Would anyone else like to speak for, just, yes, please stand up and state your name and address.
Hi, I don't know. Just to let you know, I'm glad to meet you, I'm Alonzo Brock. If you bring up the map again, we own the property just on the other side of the wood lot. Basically, a little square to your left there, and come up House and Lake Road, House and Lake Road from the front.
Next to the blue line.
Yeah, and then come on down that first square, yes.
Okay.
We own that property right there, so, we come in here to find out exactly what was going on with the rezoning, because basically, we, you know, use the road all the time to ride bikes, walking, you know, so, well, we're glad to find out it wasn't gonna be another community that just built up that close, because that was our reason for moving what we did anyway. But as far as the venues, my wife and I, you know, we always have, have to go rent places for special occasions with her sorority and other programs that we get involved in, so, I mean, we would like to see something like that, because you're probably one of your customers. And that's all I can say on that.
I think it's a great thing for the community, you know, there, there'll be out-of-town weddings, and people coming in, staying in hotels, eating in the restaurants, there'll be a lot of extra stuff here gonna get out of it, so I think, I think it's a great, it's a great thing for the area. There's a couple, but there's not gonna be any like ours, except, they don't have the big roads. Is Perry gonna help with the road, if I don't get out of the city?
No.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm private property, sorry. Anyone else like to speak for this application? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this application for the petition for a special exception as described? Thank you. Point of clarification, Mr. Walker, do we need to complete the public hearing before we ask for a vote on the special exception?
I don't think it matters.
Since it's correct, thank you sir. Since it's fresh in our mind, council, you noticed that council has the ability to make a decision on this special exception tonight, instead of waiting as a matter of course or law. So at this time, I will entertain a motion from council to address the special exception as described.
Point of clarification, this is not addressing the rezoning or the deannexation because that requires a second hearing, which will be two weeks from now, and this is just talking about the special exception.
That is correct. To further the point of clarification, the reason we can vote on this tonight is because this special exception is applicable in both the zoning and classification R-2A and RAG. So it doesn't matter which one, that, that, that the property is zoned, this special exception is applicable, is that correct, Mr. Wood?
That's correct.
So therefore, we can take action on the special exception tonight, and that's why, instead of waiting until it is, we go through a formal process of a second reading for both the deannexation and the change in zoning classification. Council, clear? Okay. Is there a motion to address the special exception? Oh, what? I need a, I need a motion either for or against, please.
I offer a motion to accept.
To approve the special exception as stated.
As stated.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The special exception is approved.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We're still in a public hearing. Item six C is for us to consider the revocation of a business license for the Howard Johnson Motel. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor and council, and the information as provided to you on July 19th, 2016, the Howard Johnsons came in front of a public hearing concerning the fact that they were delinquent on the payment of their accommodation excise tax. At that time, after questioning the recommendation from the administration with council permit, was not to take any further action since this was the first time that we had this issue with this motel. Subsequent to that, the Howard Johnsons was delinquent with December of 2016 and January of 2017 through February 23rd, and had not come and paid until March 3rd. Purpose of this public hearing is to consider whether council should revoke the business license for this institution. The recommendation from administration after you've had the public input would be to follow procedures similar to what was done with dramatic inpatient, which would be to authorize the administration to revoke the business license if they are delinquent.
Without another public hearing?
Without another public hearing.
Thank you Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have a question, Mr. Gilmore, concerning this item at this time? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for our consideration of revoking the business license for Howard Johnson Motel as described? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against our consideration of the revocation of the business license for Howard Johnson Motel as described? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item seven is a review of minutes. Item seven, and council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the February 21st, 2017 pre-council meeting, and the February 21st, 2017 council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any additions, changes, deletions, corrections, or discussion concerning these minutes at this time? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight is old business. Item eight A is old business from the mayor, I have none. Item eight B is old business from the council members. Ms. Fine Grace?
I have none.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Walker?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson?
No sir.
Thank you, Mr. King?
No sir.
Thank you. Item eight C is any old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And item D is any old business from the city attorney, Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item nine is new business. Item nine A are matters that have been referred from the March 6th, 2017 work session that was held last evening, and the March 7th, 2017 pre-council meeting we had at five o'clock this afternoon. Item nine A one, we are being asked to authorize the establishing of positions of code enforcement officer and school war operations supervisor, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor and council, we talked about this at your work session yesterday, and the administration's recommending that you authorize these positions to be established.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Gilmore, and further the discussion we had last night? Hearing none, at this time I will entertain a motion that we approve establishing the position of code enforcement officer and school war operations supervisor as described. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine D, our ordinance is for the consideration and introduction. Item nine D one, council, this is the first reading of an ordinance to the deannexation of property from the city of Perry along with a zoning classification request from the city of Perry R-2A, Two-Family Residential District, to city of Perry R-AG Residential Agricultural. The property is located at 2000 and 2000, excuse me, 2000 or 2008? Both? Okay. Um, House and Lake Road. This is the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required by council at this time. Item nine C is a resolutions for consideration and adoption. Nine C one is a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental contract between the city of Perry and the Perry Public Facilities Authority relating to the issuance of the series 2017 bonds. Ms. King?
The resolution that you have before you is to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental contract between, between the Perry Public Facilities Authority and council for the financing, financing of the special projects for the parks. We do have Mr. Famel and Mr. Camp here, and Mr. Camp does have an executive summary that people like to review. And Mr. Camp does have an executive summary that people like to review.
Thank you. Mr. Camp?
Yes, sir. I'll be quick. I'm going to have a water under the plate tonight.
Nothing's more important than the issuance of bonds that creates money.
Yes, sir. Well, we just presented to your Public Facilities Authority, they adopted the bond resolution. And...
Camp, we, you know, we, we need to show them those plates. Thank you. There's two more.
All right. Can I look on? I'll give it right back to you, I promise. If you would, look at page two. Page two gives you some important dates. We priced the bonds today. We're going to go through a process. Mr. Penel and Mr. Walker can explain better, but validation when we go in front of the judge who approves the actions both bodies have taken. We're going to close the transaction, wire money into your account on April the fourth. We're going to make payments back over time. Two thousand eighteen to two thousand thirty-seven is when the principal will mature. We have different rates in each year, but on average, the bond yield, that's your average cost of borrowing, is two point eight eight percent. So a little less than three percent over twenty years. Our rating, the city's general obligation pledge, your ability, your any and all revenues available pledge was rated by Moody's, and you're a double A three. You recall, your water sewer bonds have a rating of A one. So our tax digest, that general pledge is even higher. Double A three is very good. The bonds are being designated under a special section of the tax code called bank qualified. Just means that your authority, that Public Facilities Authority won't issue more than ten million of tax-exempt in seventeen, tax-exempt debt in seventeen. Page three. If you remember when we did the water sewer bonds, the red line was down at the bottom almost. And since the election, rates have come up some. Yields have risen. But the red line shows you where we are currently. The dark line shows you an average over the last two dozen years. So, yes, rates have gone up, but we're still historically lower than, than, than average. Page four. This shows you the yields by maturity. And that yellow highlighted column shows you how the rate goes up a little bit as we go out over time. But again, on average, two point eight eight percent. Page five. This is a comparison of your double A three bonds, how we priced them, and how those yields compare to the triple A scale, which is the highest credit quality there is. Differences in each year, but on average, we're point two eight percent higher than the triple A scale. That's very tight to what is the high-water benchmark for quality. Page six. This shows you the sources and uses of the funds. This is where all the money's going to go. We sized this two million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar bond issued to generate two million, two oh two, eight hundred deposit to the construction fund. We anticipate having some excess left over. Any excess left over stays in the construction fund. And then page seven. This is your debt service over time. Again, we're going to be going out over a twenty-year period of time. And on average, we're just under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in annual debt service, which is where we started off back in January when we were running the projections. So yields are a little bit better than we had projected back then. And so therefore, debt service is a little bit lower than we've been talking through the budget process and showed to Moody's. And then I'll let Mr. Penel, I'll let Mr. Penel handle the legal aspects.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Appreciate being back near funding tonight. The action we need for the city detective is approval of a resolution that authorizes the mayor to sign the intergovernmental contract with the authority. That is the security behind the bonds, that the city will make those contract payments, which then will in turn be paid to bondholders. As Mr. Camp indicated, there is a validation process, and so that's kind of the next step. Assuming there's going to be proof tonight, the authority already has approved the bond resolution, and we need y'all's approval of the intergovernmental contract. We will then work with y'all's attorney to get the validation filed. And then once that's done, we can close, and the proposed closing date is April the fourth. And so at that point, the bonds will be issued, and the money will come to y'all's account. We can then go on down to prepare for the projects. So that's the, that's the action we need from the council this evening. The resolution also authorizes the mayor to sign a bond purchase agreement with Raymond James. That essentially locks in all the rates in terms of the bond sale today. Some answering questions y'all may have on the process of the resolution.
Counsel? Questions? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. King, is there anything further?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. King. Thank you, gentlemen. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental contract between the city of Perry and the Perry Public Facilities Authority relating to the issuance of the Series two thousand seventeen bonds as described. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. I'm assuming you'll have something to sign soon.
I do.
You might have to finish the meeting first. Thank you. Item nine C two is a resolution to amend the period B schedule for increase in third softball registration fees. Mr. Dyke?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This is basically a simple matter of adjusting our registration fee for our adult softball program. This is not a children's program. This is for our adults. When we look back at the data for the past few years, we need, we need to make an adjustment so that will be covered expenses. And this will go into the team registration, not individual registration.
What will it become in two?
It will go from, I wanted to say about four hundred and ten dollars to four fifty. It's about a forty-dollar increase in the team. And teams can have up to twenty members. And by and large, practice is a few an hour on a team, there's twenty of us will divide that and cover twenty-two fifty-fives. I call it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any member of council had any questions of Mr. Dyke concerning this item at this time? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution to amend the period B schedule to increase the third softball registration fees as described. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine D is the award bids. Item nine D one is bid number two thousand seventeen dash three for the Park Avenue Culver project. Mr. Murray?
Mayor and counsel, as you know, our Park Avenue project has been advertised, and we have received bids. The low bidder was La Clay Construction. The bid was one hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-one, twenty-five cents. After review, we recommend award to the low bidder, La Clay.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Murray at this time concerning this bid? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept and approve the Department of Engineers' recommendation to award to the low bidder of La Clay Construction Inc. in the amount of one hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents as described. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item nine D two is bid number two thousand seventeen dash fourteen for the replacement trucks for leisure services, which will be two for the water department one and the gas department one. Ms. King?
Yes, sir. Again, thank you. Bids were solicited from Perry's dealerships for the purchase of the four vehicles, as indicated, two for leisure services, one for water and one for gas. A fund reviewed by Mr. Taylor is recommending that we do award the bids to the end Chrysler Jeep Dodge in Covington, Covington, Georgia, and for the B-six in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. However, local dealership Perry Ford does qualify for the local vendor presence, and we'd like to give them an opportunity to exercise their right of claim.
Thank you, Ms. King. Does any member of council have any questions of Ms. King concerning this bid? Thank you, ma'am. Hearing no questions, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the department's recommendation to award to the low bidder of seventy-four thousand, seventy-five dollars and twenty cents to the end Chrysler Jeep Dodge Covington, Georgia, county option, that Perry Ford does meet the local vendor preference, should they so decide. And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is there any other new business that needs to come before us at this time?
Yes, I think so. I'll let counsel go back. We had a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Relative to hotel motel tax, I'd like to recommend that you vote to authorize the city manager to receive it. Remember, we had a public hearing, which we didn't vote.
Right. Okay. Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll draw your attention back to the item under six, public hearing, item six C, where we're considering the revocation of the business license for the Howard Johnson Motel. And they remember that we're authorizing the city manager that, and they're current now. But he's asking that we vote to authorize him to revoke the business license for the Howard Johnson Motel, should they become delinquent again without a public hearing. And this is in keeping, Mr. Walker, and what we've done in the past, and that's allowed. Very good. Counsel, clear? I want to move ahead. At this time, I want to entertain a motion that we authorize the city manager to revoke the business license for Howard Johnson Motel, should they become delinquent again as described.
So.
Without, without the benefit of a public hearing. But there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Anything that we need to address further? No, sir. Thank you. Item ten, a department head item, from the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you from the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Dyke.
Just two items, sir. I'd like to let everybody know that of our survey, we're up to about three hundred and fifty. Our goal for that was five hundred. So if anybody would like to have their friends, family, and others complete our survey, it takes you about two or three minutes. We appreciate it, and we are showing a movie in Rosa Park, March eleventh, when we show you up. That's in coordination loosely with the Dogwood Festival, the pilot's dinner and everything later that we held there. So we'd love for you guys to come out and join us. As always, it's nice to be out in the park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Nothing further tonight, sir.
Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn.
Nothing.
Thank you. From the Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King.
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Anything from the City Clerk's Office, Ms. Warren?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And from Public Works, Mr. Shell.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven, a council member items. Ms. Vionne Grace?
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Motion, Mr. King. Thank you all. Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you, and Mr. Walker.
No, sir.
Thank you. Item twelve is general public items. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to agree on any item at this time? Thank you. Item thirteen, a mayor's... I'd like to remind counsel that in the morning at seven forty-five, the House and County Development Authority will have the regular monthly meeting. And the council has been invited to a dinner on Thursday evening. That's also the same time the Memorial Georgia Regional Commission meets in Niden. Twenty-first Century Partnerships having a quarterly meeting on Tuesday, March fourteenth at ten. Our next regular scheduled work session will be on March twentieth at five P.M. in this chamber. And our next regular scheduled pre-council meeting, the council meeting, will be on Tuesday, March twenty-first at five and six o'clock respectively. I will remind the general public and council that early voting for the squash of referendum is happening now. The date for that vote is March twenty-first. Please exercise your right to vote. I believe that's all about. Is there anything else we need to address, Mr. Gilmore? Counsel, any other items we need to address?
Peach's to Beaches. Peach's to Beaches is this weekend. The largest yard sale ever. There will be hundreds of vendors set up in the city of Perry, and I believe it stretches from Griffin down three forty-one to the coast. So if it's in your blood, to be honest with y'all, this is your weekend. Please be careful. There will be people all over the place. Thank you for that reminder. We do have the Dogwood Festivals coming up, coming up in April, the eighth and ninth, and a lot of other festivals are starting. The weather's turning, and the pollen is falling, ripe for rain. That's the only filter that I'm aware of that works. Ms. Vionne Grace, that's in your department, isn't it?
Isn't it?
And we do have a Walk with Mayor and Counsel coming up on the twenty-eighth of March, the fourth Tuesday of every month. Who's term is it?
District.
District two. So that will be Mr. Jones and Mr. Jackson. Y'all will determine a route, and let Ms. Warren know, so we let everybody know. We look forward to seeing counsel and your opportunity to come walk with us and in our ears among other things. If there's nothing else to come before us, thank you for your interest and participation. We stand adjourned.